Good morning. Welcome to Simsbury Farms. My name is Tom Tiberzki. I'm the Culture Parks and Recreation Director. The meeting will start in just a few moments. Just a reminder that if you are in the rink today for the town meeting, you do need to have your face mask or face covering on at all times, including if you choose to speak at the meeting. Also, if you need to use the restrooms while you're here, please exit the rink the same way you came in. Take a left. You'll go in the lower level of the main building, and the restrooms are both open in there. The door is propped open. Thank you again for coming out today. Can everybody hear me? If you're going to be speaking today, if you chose to speak at the microphone, we are going to alternate microphones between speakers. There's blue cameras on the radio. You can see them come up. It's just active. It's going to put a black part to move up as you're coming. Pretty simple.
Okay, good morning. Can you hear me, Tom? Am I good? Okay. Welcome to the Town of Simsbury Special Town Meeting for the Acquisition of Meadowwood. I'm Simsbury's Town Clerk Erica Butler. The notice and call for this meeting was posted on the town website and social media accounts, local cable station, signboards found throughout town, and appeared in the current on April 16th, 2021. It reads as follows. Town of Simsbury Legal Notice, Special Town Meeting. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Section 409 of the Charter of the Town of Simsbury that a special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the Town of Simsbury will be held at the Simsbury Farms Ice Rink, 100 Old Farms Road in the Town of Simsbury, on April 24th, 2021, at 11:00 a.m. to consider the following resolution. Acquisition of Meadowwood Property. Resolve A. That the Town of Simsbury appropriate for the purchase and improvement of Meadowwood, approximately 288 acres of undeveloped land located off Hoskins Road, County Road, and Firetown Road, and authorize bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation. Pursuant to Section 406 of the Charter of the Town of Simsbury, this resolution shall be subject to an automatic referendum by all qualified voters of the Town of Simsbury on a date set by the Board of Selectmen. Those eligible to participate at the special town meeting include electors defined as all Simsbury registered voters who are 18 years of age and a U.S. citizen, and voters as defined in Connecticut General Statute 7-6 as persons who own property valued at $1,000 or more in the Town of Simsbury. All those who meet this criteria should have already checked in with the registrars of voters. If you did not, please take a moment to do so. We ask that those ineligible to participate in observing today's meeting sit in the designated area. Please see one of our staff members if you need assistance finding this location. We are asking all attendees to please observe social distancing and to wear face coverings during today's proceeding. I will now entertain nominations for moderator of today's meeting. Okay. Eric Wellman has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of Eric Wellman for moderator, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Mr. Wellman, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Erica. Can folks hear me? Good. It's good to see so many people here in person, and there have been many firsts over the past year, and this is yet another one of them. Right now, if there's no objection, I will ask Erica Butler to serve as secretary and Town Attorney Bobby Crescendo to serve as parliamentarian. I would like to introduce members of the Board of Selectmen. To my left, Deputy First Selectman Sean Ascom. And then left to right, Chris Peterson, Mike Payne, Jackie Bados, and Wendy McStudis. We realize that it has been a little over a year since all six of us have been in the same room together. I respect all of you so much, and I've missed you all very much, and I'm special being back with you. This better if I talk into the mic? Excellent. Okay. If there is no objection, we will follow Robert's rules for this town meeting. I would now like to recognize Deputy First Selectman Sean Ascom, who will provide an overview of the Meadowwood acquisition and the process that the town has followed to date.
Eric and I did not call each other to coordinate our blue suits, but... So I'll do my best to be brief this morning again. I'm Sean Ascom, member of the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to provide you just a little bit of background on what we're all going to discuss this morning today. And then if the chair permits, I'll enter a resolution. Again, we're talking about the town purchasing from the Trust for Public Land and 288 acres of undeveloped land located off of Hoskins County and Firetown Roads. For those folks that have been in town as long as myself, and I suspect many of you have, this is a historic parcel for us in many different ways. It's a parcel that was debated substantially by the Land Use Commissions, I believe, two decades ago, subject to many court discussions and ultimately resolution. What are the purposes of why are we looking at Meadowwood? From the Board of Selectmen side, and for many of the proponents of this project, open space, walking trails, passive recreation are certainly critical to this town, to this community, to our members. It also has agricultural opportunities. We have the opportunity to preserve the historic barns, vistas, and cultural heritage that's located on that property. I, myself, couldn't think of a time where I would ever want to drive through that end of town and not see those barns, not see that land. When I paint the picture of Simsbury in my head, there's a couple of places that I paint. I paint the Flower Bridge. I paint the Tower. And I paint those barns on that land as what I would think of and describe. If I had the ability to paint, and trust me, I don't. But if I did, those are the three places that I would lay out for folks that had never been here. Another key piece of this land is 24 acres that the town is acquiring with no deed restrictions. There's been much discussion around that. There is no stated purpose at this point. It's not part of the discussion or resolution. Certainly could be used for athletic fields in the future as we have a continued need for that, could be for other purposes, but not something that the town or the citizens need to decide today. This land provides substantial protection for wildlife. We heard at the public hearing for the Board of Finance some pretty deep and intellectual conversations about the bird habitats and otherwise on that. So obviously, a very important for our wildlife. Overall, there's been much discussion about the funding of this project. The total purchase price is round number $6 million. The town's contribution is roughly 41% of that total. So what we're debating or discussing today is that $2.5 million number. It's anticipated to be funded with 10-year bonds. The acquisition itself would be $2.4 million with about $90,000 in appraisal, signage, parking, environmental review, et cetera. The town's cost per acre with all costs involved is $8,700 an acre. I think that's a really important number to keep in mind. Why is it quote-unquote "so low"? Because we have partnerships with many folks, and I had to write them all down just to make sure I got them right. But obviously, the Town of Simsbury, the Trust for Public Land, has been a phenomenal partner through this entire endeavor. And they've lined up for us in a number of ways. State grants, both with SHIPO, with DEEP, the federal government, Department of Ag, and also private donors. They've raised and are raising money to cover their costs and a number of other costs on the front end to make this the maximum amount of dollars from these grants and potentially from what we're discussing today to go towards that acquisition. Just a couple of items. We've had a pretty substantial process on this. We started, I would say, in the summer of '19. Research and analysis that carried through the winter of '20. In the budget season, the Board of Selectmen, the town manager, did include Meadowwood on the capital budget plan. There was discussion that we weren't ready at that time, so this is not this year, but the prior year's budget. We weren't ready to forward it on to the town. We still had some work to do. In April of '20, so about a year ago, there was a substantial presentation to the Board of Selectmen. In the summer of '20, the project itself was referred to various town boards and commissions. Positive or neutral reviews were received. The positive reviews included open space, cultural parks and rec, the planning commission, conservation, historic district commission. Zoning was a split referral. In August, the Board of Selectmen voted to proceed with the steps necessary for the potential acquisition of this land. In September, there was a presentation to the Board of Finance. In the fall of '20 through the winter of '21, there was additional information, analysis, and an additional appraisal at the request of the Board of Finance done. And then once again, in the '21 budget, the town manager and the Board of Selectmen included the Meadowwood project in the capital plan. We're here today because of the hard work of many folks. I'd like to recognize Susan Messino and her team for getting the signatures needed to call this town meeting. Nearly 1,600 signatures were received to place this purchase on a referendum after we concluded with our business today. Assuming this referendum vote is a positive one, we would then march towards a June or early July closing for this land. So, Mr. Chairman, if you'll permit me, I'd like to offer a resolution to the body today. And forgive me, I have to read the whole thing due to procedure, so hang in there. Resolved... Excuse me. Resolution appropriating $2,515,860 for the purchase and improvement of Meadowwood, approximately 288 acres of undeveloped land located off Hoskins Road, County Road, and Firetown Road, and authorizing bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation. Resolved A. That the Town of Simsbury approximate for the purchase and improvement of Meadowwood, approximately 280 acres of undeveloped land located off Hoskins Road, County Road, Firetown Road. The appropriation may be spent for the planning and engineering and other consulting fees, equipment costs, land acquisition, design, construction costs, size improvements, including, but not limited to, signage, parking improvements, and improvements to the barns, legal fees, net temporary interest, and other financing costs. Other expenses related to the project and its financing. The Board of Selectmen may determine the particulars and may reduce or modify the scope of the project, and the entire appropriation may be spent on the reduced or modified project. B. That the town issue bonds or notes in the amount not to exceed $2,515,860 to finance the appropriation for the project. The bonds or notes shall be issued pursuant to Section 7-369 of the Connecticut General Statutes, provisions of 1958 as amended, and any other enabling acts. The bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town secured by the irrevocable pledge of the full faith and credit of the town. The terms of the bonds or notes shall not exceed 10 years. C. That the town issue and renew temporary notes from time to time in anticipation of receipt of the proceeds from the sale of the bonds or notes for the project. The amount of the notes outstanding at any time shall not exceed $2,515,860. The notes shall be issued pursuant to Section 7-378 of the Connecticut... of the General Statutes of Connecticut, provisions of 1958 as amended. The notes shall be general obligations of the town and shall be secured by the irrevocable pledge of the full faith and credit of the town. The town shall comply with the provisions of Section 7-378A of the Connecticut... of the General Statutes with respect to any notes that do not mature within the time permitted by said Section 7-378. We've really gone deep with the legal language, Bob. D. That the town manager and the treasurer of the town shall sign any bonds or notes by their manual or facsimile signatures. The law firm of Pullman &amp; Conley LLC is designated as bond counsel to approve the legality of the bonds or notes. The town manager and the treasurer are authorized to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturity, redemption provisions, form, and other details of the bonds or notes to designate one or more bank or trust companies to be the certifying bank, registrar, transfer agent, or paying agent for the bonds or notes to provide for the keeping of a record of the bonds or notes, to designate financial advisor to the town in connection with the sale of bonds or notes, to sell the bonds or notes at public or private sale, to deliver the bonds or notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary to appropriate... to issue the bonds or notes. E. That the town hereby declares its financial intent under the Federal Income Tax Regulation Section 1.150-2 that the project costs may be paid from the temporary advances of available funds and that the town reasonably expects to reimburse any such advancements from the proceeds of borrowings in an aggregate principal amount not in the excess of the amount of borrowing authorized above for the project. The town manager and the treasurer are authorized to amend such declaration of official intent as they deem necessary or advisable and to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from the federal income taxation of interest on the bonds or notes authorized by this resolution if issued on a tax-exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to United States in future years. F. That the town manager and treasurer are authorized to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds or notes. G. That the Board of Selectmen, the town manager, the treasurer, and other proper officers of the town are authorized to take all other action which is necessary or desirable to complete the project and to issue bonds, notes, or obligations to finance the aforementioned appropriation. H. That pursuant to Section 809 of the Town Charter, this resolution be presented to a referendum vote under the following caption. Shall the Town of Simsbury appropriate for the purchase and improvement of Meadowwood, approximately 288 acres of undeveloped land located off Hoskins Road, County Road, and Firetown Road, and authorize bond and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation.
Thank you, Sean. I delegate all of the good tasks to Sean. So thank you. Before we move on to public comment, just a couple of items. If you are... We've set up these blue lines for you to line up behind if you're interested in speaking. If you're near the line, I ask that you move your chair a little bit further away so that you're not crowding those folks out. I also wanted to introduce the people who are up here. So to the right of Sean is our town attorney, Bobby Crescendo. To my immediate right is our management specialist, Tom Fitzgerald, and town clerk Erica Butler. And at the table with the white tablecloth is our town manager Maria Capriola and deputy town manager Melissa Appleby. For public comment, I would invite anyone who wishes to speak to line up at this time along the blue lines. And you'll see that there are markings about six feet apart, so people aren't standing too close together. We're asking that you limit your comments to three minutes. Tom will be keeping time, and I'll let you know when three minutes is up. We ask that you just speak to the resolution that Sean read a few moments ago. I also ask that everyone be respectful of all opinions. Like most issues, this is one where reasonable people can disagree, and we welcome all opinions today. We ask also that you leave your mask on while you're speaking. And the last thing I wanted to share is that this is not a forum where we're going to be responding to questions. If there are questions that are raised through the public comment, we will do our best to capture those, and I'll do my best to answer those questions that I'll share over social media at a later time. And then the final piece is that we're going to adjourn the town meeting once the comment period is done. The Board of Selectmen will have a very brief meeting, likely under five minutes long. You're welcome to stay or take off. At that point, we will move the resolution to referendum. And I think it's just important to be clear what we are doing and what we're not doing today. If we... You know, when we move it to referendum, it's not because of the comments that we heard for or against today. It's not because we are personally in favor or not in favor of the Meadowwood acquisition. This is really a process that's dictated by our town charter. So with that, let me turn it over to Joan for our first comment.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. I am opposed to the appropriation of $2,515,850 for the purchase and improvement of Meadowwood's 288 acres. The taxpayers are asked to support a $2.5 million project of land that has been vacant for years and produces $200,000 a year in revenue. The plan of development does not support this, and the Board of Finance voted no toward the Meadowwood acquisition to vote. This additional infrastructure costs and overhead expenses have not been presented. The development of 296 homes and on the land that reflects 88 deed restricted homes for affordable housing would be eliminated. The Meadowwood land when built is an economic driver adding hundreds of people to support the business community. There is a vacant field of 45 acres on the Barnum Hills Triangle that was acquired for the Meadowwood negotiations that can be used for recreation. With all the town demands, the Meadowwood property should not be a priority. The land has been vacant for over many years with no interest in the development of the property. Why should the town take a tax property off the roads and increase the debt to the taxpayers where many of the taxpayers, both residents and businesses, have been financially strapped as a result of the COVID-19 epidemic? The $2.2 million costs to the taxpayers will have additional costs year after year. Why should the town share the costs with the land trust? The land trust considers the property viable for the requisition. They should pay the full amount for the sale. On Wednesday, 21st, 2021, the Hockley Current had a headline, "Town Attorney Orders Redo Barnum Field Budget." Quote, "According to Needham's ruling, the contingency fund cannot include earmarked items based on case law," end quote. Does this ruling affect the Meadowwood acquisition? As the town adds more infrastructure to the Meadowwood land, the overhead costs that are not mentioned will add additional costs year after year and remove other capital expenditures in the future. This will require more employees and machinery to maintain the land and trails and other overhead costs that have not been discussed. The Board of Finance was correct when they denied forwarding Meadowwood acquisition to a referendum vote on the merits and scope of the acquisition when other projects have priority in reviewing the totality of the expenditures and revenues of the budget. The Meadowwood acquisition should get a resounding no vote on May 4th budget vote. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Chat Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thanks very much, Joan. Who would like to go next?
Peter Ascom, 5 Branch Brook Drive, Simsbury. I'm here to speak that I am for the land purchase. My reasons are its great value for the town along with vision for the future. I believe that, as explained, the low cost makes it an easy decision there from the Board of Finance standpoint and the town. The historic significance also enhances the purchase. Also preserves the farmland and views and the walking trails. Also for the future land used for the town with athletic fields, I think there's great vision there for the future. So based on that, I think it's great value with vision. It should have been approved in the budget and capital process. It was the first priority of capital for the Board of Selectmen, but the Board of Finance didn't even give the project the courtesy of a vote. I believe that the Meadowwood land purchase can be purchased with bond premium or from capital reserves, which should not cost the taxpayers any tax increase along with no impairment to the town's AAA bond rating. So based on the facts listed, I approve the purchase of the Meadowwood land. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And feel free to line up behind either microphone. Thank you.
Yeah. Dan Mudgeet, 30 Madison Lane. I think it should definitely be approved because the amount per year in taxes that it will increase over the 10 years, is that what it is? 10 years supposedly is really not that much. $250 over 10 years is not that much. And we're losing open space and land. Somebody's going to come in and build an ugly Gulag just like they did on Hot Meadow. And I think it's financially wise for the town to prevent that from happening any further. And I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Joe Campalita, 3 Brown Gate Lane. I'm speaking today to express my strong support for the Meadowwood purchase. My support comes from a variety of perspectives. I'm here as a representative of the Simsbury Pollinator Pathway. I serve on the board of the Simsbury Historical Society and also serve on the town's Conservation Committee. 20 years ago, Griffin Land, the real estate division of Culbrow Tobacco, proposed a high-density development of 620 homes on about 300 acres, which included this parcel of land. At the time, I was on the board of the North Simsbury Coalition, which was a nonprofit environmental citizens' action group. We worked with DEEP, commercial and university-based environmental and land experts to present a case against the overdevelopment of this land. Our findings were striking, and what was true 20 years ago is still true today. The Meadowwood parcel is a major part of our largest offer for recharge area in Simsbury. There are several vernal pools on the parcel, which are critical to the ecosystem, providing habitat for numerous native plants, amphibians, and other animals. Many species of birds, pollinating insects, and animals utilize the Meadowwood parcel as a major migratory pathway between Great Pond and the McLean Game Refuge. And Meadowwood is historically significant. In 1940s, Martin Luther King, along with other students of Morehouse College, worked tobacco in this and other fields in Simsbury. King said, "The liberating experience of getting out from under the Jim Crow laws of the time had a tremendous influence on him in his future work with civil rights." So let's take a look at what would happen if we don't purchase this parcel of land. What do we think Culbrow would do? I think they'd sell it off in whole or in parts to the highest bidders who will in turn develop the land. And like any developer, they will build what is most profitable to them without regard to what we think should be built. High-density development will substantially damage the area. It will have a deleterious effect on our wells with potential impact on the quality of our drinking water. It's not just private well, but it's town water too since town wells also draw from the opera. It will create damaging runoff of pesticides, fertilizers, and harmful sprays from residential properties. It will fracture the natural migratory pathway between Great Pond and the McLean Game Refuge. Development of this parcel would eliminate valuable metal lands, which in turn would kill off pollinating insects which are already in rapid and extreme decline. And pollinator rapid decline is entailed to declining bird populations. And any development on this parcel would literally pave over our connection to the past. By purchasing Meadowwood, we have the opportunity to keep an environmentally sensitive parcel of land, protect our vital aquifer, of land, protect our vital offer, maintain the vital migratory pathway between Great Pond and the McLean Game Refuge, and keep our connection to the past. I strongly urge the Board of Selectmen to vote to place the Meadowwood purchase on the budget referendum on May 4, and I strongly urge the residents of Simsbury to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Shane Spacher McAlpine, 1 Tower Drive. I strongly support the purchase of Meadowwood. I'm a fourth-generation resident of Simsbury. Trust me, I have no fancy pedigree. My ancestors immigrated here for work and to live off the land. I'm a former member of the North Simsbury Coalition and am very familiar with the distant and recent history of Meadowwood. I'm currently a board member of the Simsbury Pollinator Pathway and appreciate the value of Meadowwood's fields, meadows, and vernal pools to support wildlife. The proximity to McLean Game Refuge, Great Pond, Massaco State Forest, and Farmington Canal Heritage Trail, its historical significance, and countless other factors put it in a class of its own. It's part of the upgrading recharge area for the Hoskins offer, and as such contributes to production of water in our public drinking system of wells now owned by Aquarian. Land conservation and preservation are high priorities globally, nationally, and across Connecticut. How do you put a price on protecting soil, water, wildlife, and outdoor recreation? Multiple Simsbury boards, commissions, and not-for-profit organizations understand the benefits and social responsibility inherent in the purchase of Meadowwood. The timing is not perfect. Nobody wants a tax increase, but there are no do-overs if this opportunity is squandered. The other capital improvement projects up for vote have merit. Meadowwood doesn't take away from that. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison, and there's no easy choices of what to cut, if anything. What if the taxpayers are willing to shoulder the cost of purchasing Meadowwood? Now we have the right to vote. There's no comparing it to high school bleachers, depressed spots, sidewalk improvements, irrigation systems, or any other capital improvement that depreciates over time. In 20 years, new schools will need new roofs, they'll need new heating and cooling systems, roads will continue to be paved, but Meadowwood will by that time have been fully paid off. Its intrinsic and fiscal value will only increase over time. I was taught that if you take care of the land, the land takes care of you and the wildlife too. How will future generations reflect upon this decision? Will they be grateful that the land is preserved and protected in perpetuity for the benefit of all? Or will they look back with dismay and disbelief that the taxpayers of Simsbury were willing to give it all away? And what would it cost individuals? I don't know, $25 per year for 10 years? Thank you, Simsbury Land Trust, the local Grange for supporting Meadowwood. Thank you to all the residents who signed a petition to give us the right to vote about how to spend our own hard-earned tax dollars. I'm optimistic that the voters of Simsbury will do the right thing. Let's vote yes.
Thank you.
Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I know the acoustics are a little challenging here. First, I'd like to say thank you for the public recognition of our town leadership, of the effort that this community made to get this on the referendum, and publicly thank the land trust, the Pollinator Pathway people, many neighborhood groups, and other environmental groups that stepped up. And if you know me, nothing is more important to me than a community that cares about their community. It's incredibly important for all of us and very meaningful to me. I want to make it clear that the outpouring of support for the petition in no way guarantees the outcome of the referendum. And we're going to switch mics because this is giving a very, very weird echo. Okay, this is not any better, but anyway. So I would just like to say that previous petition drives in Simsbury ultimately failed by a lot at referendum. So if you care about this issue, it's imperative that you get out and vote. I sent in comments to the Board of Finance, and there's a lot of information about this property. It's all in the public record, and I brought some printouts of that information on chairs at the back if you'd like to pick that up. I would really encourage people to watch some of the meetings about this issue that have been taped, thankfully by SCTV. They're here today live streaming it, and particularly would like to thank Mark Orenstein for his effort at providing this public service of getting information out to the community. I'm voting yes on this, and I laid out in my comments to the Board of Finance, natural science, climate science, social science, and financial reasons why I'm strongly voting yes as a Grange member, as an educator, as a scientist, as a citizen, as a member of the Open Space Commission, and as a mom. So three minutes seems very short, and I don't want to prolong this, but I'd just like to say if people would like to talk about this more or pick up fact sheets, we're having an event at the Grange today where we can discuss this resolution further. In addition to talking about this, you could listen to Dave Fields, who's a New York Blues Hall of Famer and listened to a great concert, and the Grange is committed to everything being donation-based and accessible. So thank you very much, and I hope everyone will vote on May 4.
Thank you, Susan.
David Bush, 4 Catherine Lane. Susan's right, this really does matter. I am here in support of the purchase of this particular piece of property. The idea that a property owner or a property, somebody who wants to buy property can buy it above 40% of its value is extraordinary. The town has done a wonderful job of partnering with other organizations to make this available to us. Secondly, this has already been reviewed by over a half dozen boards, commissions, and committees. I think that says a lot because these individuals who volunteer their time have thoroughly reviewed and vetted this idea of the purchase of this property. Three, this is not about affordable housing. The developer of that property has chosen not to move forward with that development. So any idea that this means we're going to have less affordable housing is absolutely inaccurate because this is only going to be sold to a third party who then developed the property as they choose. Lastly, I am chairman of Park and Rec. I wanted to see if I could clear up a few misconceptions that I've been made aware of. First of all, there was concern that this would result in capital projects like the irrigation system of the golf course not going forward. That is not accurate. That project is actually in the capital budget and will be going forward in the next year or years. Secondly, there's concern about the extra maintenance costs. An open space like this is the most easily maintained piece of property. The town recently authorized another individual to work in the Park and Rec department. So no, this is not going to cause a significant burden on Park and Rec. Finally, there was some concern about the fields. These fields are not designated as indicated. This is simply 23 acres that does not have a deed restriction. If fields are going to be built, they are multipurpose. They are not going to be geared to any one particular group. For all the foregoing reasons, I support the purchase. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Erin Levitt Smith, 7 Winter Green Lane. I'm in support of the Meadowwood acquisition, but I wanted to say, first of all, a huge thank you to Susan Messino, who in my estimation is a force of nature. So, thank you, Susan. Because I think without her strong leadership, I'm not sure where we'd be today. I also want to thank all of the town officials because, as upset I was at the process that happened, democracy has reigned, and that's my takeaway. And I just wanted to thank everyone involved. I want this to go to referendum so the voters can decide, so that everyone in town has a voice, not just a small group of people, whether they're for it or not. So I just wanted to thank all of the Board of Selectmen, the town officials, and again, thanks to Susan and all the people that made this work. And I just, I really do hope this moves forward and that people do go out and vote and really take a look at the information that Susan's provided. Because again, I think if we're guided by science and not emotion, it will make everyone's decision a bit better. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Murphy, 464 Firetown Road. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I stand in support of this referendum. I'm sure people often say, how can we afford not to do this? And I understand arguments on all sides. I think I'm uniquely able to see that I will be a senior citizen, a mother of a child in Simsbury Public Schools, and certainly I'm an environmental supporter and preservation land supporter. I've lived here for 20 years. When I bought my house, I bought it from the owners who had lived there for 30 years before. They were involved and had seen this property that's now called Meadowwood. It's the first time I've ever heard it called Meadowwood, actually, and the lawsuit that ensued over that time to try and fight the prior developmental or development proposal. Simsbury is very much like the town where I grew up in Illinois, in a northwest suburb of Chicago. And I saw what happened to that town with overdevelopment. I saw that the land that had been in my family for five generations as farmers turned into a very, very busy road with environmental impact on animals as well as insects, and the degradation to the point where that land was not able to be used. Once this land is developed, there's no going back. I believe that the town and its residents, through their active participation in local government, as exemplified by the initiative to move Meadowwood, the purchase of Meadowwood to a referendum, should be the ones to decide what happens to this property. I am also concerned, as a parent of a child at Squadron Line, that already the largest elementary school that houses the district's Support Services Department for Special Education will see an influx of many new children if this property is developed. I've spoken with my friends who are in the Latimer District, as we all know, needs to have some renovation and have some expansion. They have seen what the influx of a development does with class sizes and facility needs. The open space that is encompassed by Meadowwood allows plants and grasses and native others, native species to encourage diversity of birds, including endangered songbirds. I walk that area every day with my dog, and I've been able to see really unique species that people I've talked to who have lived in the area haven't seen in a generation. So I do encourage your support for the environmental use, excuse me, for the use to protect the environmental quality of the area with regard to water. I've had to have my well tested because of its proximity to the prior tobacco fields. And I do know that over time, we are able to encourage that improvement, partially through farming, but also through keeping additional housing developments from being built on the area. I also appreciate the historical aspect, and I was very encouraged to see so much movement by this town to recognize our historical and agricultural past and also the impact that the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. had in Simsbury, or the impact that Simsbury had on his life. So I thank you for the time, and I do encourage an approval of this referendum.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak today? Okay, hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting to automatic referendum on a date set by the Board of Selectmen at a special meeting that will follow in just a moment. This special meeting will be brief, likely less than five minutes. I invite you to stay. If you do want to leave, I just ask that you do so quietly. So we will prepare for our special meeting.
Am I live? Okay. We will call the special meeting to order, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, just as it is for all. So item A is setting the automatic referendum date for Meadowwood and approving the referendum questions. The resolution shall the town of Simsbury appropriate $2,515,860 for the purchase and improvement of Meadowwood, approximately 288 acres of undeveloped land located off of Hoskins Road, County Road, and Firetown Road, and authorize bonds and notes in the same amount of finance set appropriation. Is there a motion to set the date of Tuesday, May 4, 2021, for automatic referendum for Meadowwood pursuant to Section 406 of the Town Charter from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Simsbury Public Library, 725 Hot Meadow Street?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, five to one. Item B is the proposed Meadowwood explanatory text. So the town has put together an explanatory document about the acquisition that provides an overview. It is in your packets that was posted online. The intent is so that people are informed of what they're voting on. It can be distributed by numerous organizations. At this point in the process, we cannot, as a town, advocate for or against this purchase, so the text is intended to be factual. Was there any feedback on the document that was in your packets?
I did send it to the State Election Enforcement Commission, and Joshua Foley, the staff attorney who helps us every year, has reviewed it, and we have made, we've included all his incorporated, all his recommended changes have been incorporated. So as of today, it's been, you know, they never, they always qualify it by saying he can't speak for the commission. However, he's approved it as revised, so it's in good shape to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a motion effective April 24, 2021, to approve and authorize the issuance of the explanatory text as presented, and staff is authorized to make changes as recommended by the town attorney, bond counsel, and seek?
I'll second it.
Is there any further conversation? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, five to one. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That for you?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for being here today.
Thank you, everyone. You can leave your metal chair if you didn't bring your own chair, just leave the chairs where they are on the rank, we'll take care of it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Good job, there.